Good evening. Good evening and welcome to the City of Lowell zoning Board of Appeals for May 23, Currently, the meeting is live on LTC as well as Zoom and call-in is available. All documents are posted on Lowell City website. If you have a phone, please place it on silent or turn it off. If you need to take a call or speak amongst yourselves, please do that in the hallway in order to not disrupt decorum. Tonight's alternate voting member is Mr. George Proko. We'll move right into continued business under ZBA 2022-19 for variance Angela Kaluza at 239 Manser Street. Section 5.1 has applied to Lowell zoning Board of Appeals for variance approval to construct a covered deck at the property. The property is located in suburban, single-family SSF zoning district and requires variance approval under section 5.1 for the relief from the minimum floor area ratio, FAR requirement, and any other relief required on a Lowell zoning ordinance. Petitioner here this evening. If you mind stating your name and address for the public record, tell us a little bit about your project.
Angela Kalasha, 239 Manser.
Just give us a brief overview on what's existing and what you're going to do.
Sure. So currently, existing on the front of the property is some shrubbery with a small entryway portico. The plan would be to get rid of the shrubbery, get rid of the portico, replace the current wooden stairs that are there, build new stairs, and build a wraparound porch that would go from the Manser side. We sit on Manser and Wentworth, so it would wrap from the front on Manser over to the side on Wentworth Avenue.
Perfect. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open up to the board. Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think to me, this is very minimal, the relief you're seeking, ma'am. I think it's not to add value to your home but to the neighborhood, and I don't see any opposition as well, so I think this would be a great addition to the neighborhood and to your home, so I wish you the best of luck. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Sean?
Thank you through, Mr. Chairman. I mean, it looks good. It looks like it will fit in with the property. I do have a couple of questions, though. I'm just trying to figure out, so you're asking for a proposal, you're asking for relief on the floor-to-area ratio, but can't really figure out what the FAR really would be. The paperwork that we have doesn't really specify that. Do you know what the square footage of the proposed deck is?
Sure. So the square footage of the, the square footage area is 478.6 square feet, and the floor area ratio for the new porch is 0.0836.
That's going to be added on?
Yes.
So current is .54, right, Dylan? So that she said, so they're going to add on point, .08, you said?
.0836.
.08, so we're looking at .55 now? Or point, no, .08 would be, we're looking at close to .6 now, right? FAR?
Yeah, I think that'll be like .62.
Yeah. And the maximum is 35. That's, I mean, it's a lot, it's a lot of relief. Some, yeah. Well, considering what the floor ratio, ratio was before, it's minimal with what's being added on. So you kind of grand, you know, I guess grandfathered in from the prior FAR on that, so. But the, but as DPD pointed out, the deck does meet all the other requirements. Couple of other things I did have, though. It looks like you've taken away two bushes to put the things. Any plans to replace them or put any other form of shrubbery or, or other trees or bushes?
Sure, sure. Yeah, so additional shrubbery after the project is complete and when appropriate to plant will be planted, you know, smaller shrubbery will be planted probably in front of the, um...
Okay, so we'll probably condition that on providing a landscape plan with the updated plans that show where the...
I mean, I don't know if that would...
Proposed shrubbery.
...for sure if we're going to do that or not.
Okay. Like I said, it looks like it, it should fit in with the neighborhood. It looks like it's a very decent design, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I echo my fellow board members' comments here. I think the .0836 is minimal. The fact that you're .54 is the driving factor, but the enhancement to the front of the house and the neighborhood, I think, would be wonderful, and you have a usable porch, which only, I think, improves the whole aesthetic as well as usability of the property, so I really like the idea of it. I would just like, as I think Sean was alluding to, that we condition maybe that the documentation does state that your FAR proposed is what it is, .6236, just as a final document that we add that as a condition, but I think it's an easy one to see the validity of, so I look forward to seeing this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The enhancement you propose to your home is certainly deserving of the relief you're requesting. I'll vote in favor of the petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, I think this is an easy pass from my perspective. It does meet all the requirements, and I don't think that it would have any negative impact on the neighborhood, so I'll be voting in favor of it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, you've heard the, you know, positive feedback from the board. I expressed the same thing. You've done a wonderful job on that property. How long have you been there now?
Fourteen years.
Fourteen, fourteen years, yeah. It was a long-term property owner, great, great neighbor, and you and your family, your children do wonderful. Have been, have been great, your activities there, so I'm in full favor. Any, any other comments by the board? I'm being heard. May I have a motion?
And through, Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify, so the conditions...
Conditions.
One would be, so I put down Dennis, if you think this total FAR does not exceed .63. Would that be, you think that would do it, or?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
So the condition being the total FAR with the new addition, the total FAR would not exceed .63, and updated landscape plans to be submitted to DPD to include any new shrubbery in the front of the property. So, do you get that, Dylan? Okay.
Yep.
With that, through, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZBA 2022-19 for 239 Manser Street for variance approval under section 5.1 for minimum FAR to construct a covered deck on property with the previously mentioned conditions.
Thank you, may I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by the vice chairman, may I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approved with conditions.
Vice Chair Peck?
Approved with conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approved with conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approved with conditions.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Proko?
Approved with conditions.
You've been unanimously approved. Good luck, and we wish you the best.
Thank you.
Take care. Moving forward under new business, ZBA 2022-13, variance, Eric Chim at 637 Chimpson Street, section 5.1, section 6.1. Eric Chim has applied to the planning board and zoning board of appeals to convert an existing two-family residential building at 637 639 Chimpson Street into a three-family residential building. The subject property is located in the traditional neighborhood mixed-use TMU zoning district. The application requires special permit approval from the Lowell Planning Board per article 12.1 subsection C for the use and the variance approval from the Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals per section 6.1 for relief from the minimum off-street parking requirement per section 5.1. For relief from the minimum lot area per dwelling unit requirement and minimum usable open space per dwelling unit requirement and any other relief required on the Lowell zoning ordinance, the petitioner here this evening. Good evening, sir. You state your name and address for the record, please.
Rishman Dafshar from Touch Engineering. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. The applicant has been using this dwelling actually almost for the past 15 years as a three-family building, and of course, at this point, he's trying to legalize it and has already applied to planning board. The special permit last week was approved by planning board. The building commissioner has visited the site and pointed out some positive remarks about this property. The applicant has kept the property up to date, very clean and well-maintained. The site currently has four parking spaces, two in the garage and two on the parking lot, and thus far, the parking has not been really a problem, honestly, parking. The parcel is a corner lot located at the corner of Viola and Champsford, and there are parking spaces usually available on Viola Street also. There has not been any really negative comments from any of the city department. With that, the applicant is requesting the variance. If there is any questions?
Thank you. Appreciate that. I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open up to the board. Sean?
Thank you through, Mr. Chairman. I mean, generally speaking, I'm not really opposed to it, but I do have, I'm just kind of curious, were there any floor plans ever submitted about how the structure of the inside interior of the, of the property is laid out as far as being a three-family? Because I didn't see anything in the, I didn't see anything in the file.
I'm not sure if there was any floor plans submitted.
Floor plans were not submitted, but the building commissioner stated that he's walked through the property and...
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear you, Dylan.
Floor plans weren't submitted, but the building commissioner stated he has walked through the property and there were no issues.
Okay. So, I mean, just seems like something that we should have, but that's all right, we can take the floor. I mean, the building commissioners worked for, he did, I will note that the building commissioner did submit a written approval, a written, written note in support of this, so. All right, that was my only concern, really. I'll listen to my other fellow board members, but I generally don't think that this should be much of an issue, but thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Sean. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I... Improve the housing availability. I think this one makes a lot of sense, especially where we really haven't had any issue for a number of years. It's been functioning as a three-family, and the relief is minimal here, I think. So I could strongly support this, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You had a very favorable appearance before the planning board. DPD comments are all positive. The building commissioner strongly supports your petition, and essentially, you're just trying to right any wrongs that may have existed. You've been operating as a three-family without incident, and as you said, the property is absolutely well-maintained.
Correct.
I think it's a win-win. Win for the city with its housing stock and a win for the petitioner. I'll support the petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also agree with my fellow board members. I think this, this approval makes sense. Just driving by the area, it looks, you know, immaculate, it's well-maintained, and again, just bringing it up to code, you know, so that, you know, it can be reconciled with the city records. I think, I commend the applicant for, for bringing forth to, to bring it to a close. So I'll be voting in favor of this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Judge. Mr. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I agree with my colleagues. This conversion actually makes a lot of sense. The property's been used as a three-family for, for years, if not decades, and, you know, to me, it's just like doing all the crossing Ts, dotting Is and all that, so it makes, it makes total sense, and like my colleague said, it's, you know, housing is needed, and it's, this is actually fits in well, so just trying to make sure everything's up on the, up to the standard, so I have no issues, and I wish you the best of luck, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So you've heard the positive feedback. I agree with my colleagues, I think, to, to the credit of all the city agencies to get involved and move this in the right direction, particularly since there's been no issues on history, and particularly with the building commissioner having hands-on directly on this. I think that bodes well for you and your petition, so I will support that, and with that, I'd like to seek a motion.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZBA 2022-13 for 637 Chimpson Street for variance approval under section 5.1 for minimum lot area per dwelling unit and minimum usable open space per dwelling unit, and section 6.1 for off-street parking to convert existing two-family residential building to a three-family residential building.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Briere. May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approved.
Vice Chair Peck?
Approve.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member McCarthy?
Approve.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Proko?
Approve.
Sir, you've been unanimously approved. Wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for coming in. Moving forward under new business, ZBA 2022-24 for variance JAF 27 LLC at 175 Dalton Street, section 5.1. JAF 27 LLC has applied to Lowell zoning Board of Appeals, seeking approval to construct a new attached unit to an existing single-family home at 175 Dalton Street. The subject property is located in traditional two-family TTF zoning district and requires variance approval pursuant to section 5.1 for relief from the front yard setback requirement and minimum side yard setback requirement and any other relief required on the Lowell zoning ordinance. There's a petitioner here this evening. Perhaps on Zoom? Perhaps on a late email to notice he may seek a continuance. We'll table this until later in the meeting. Moving forward under ZBA 2022-26 of variances, variance Eric Mohica at 854 Andover Street, section 5.1. Eric Mohica has applied to Lowell zoning Board of Appeals to construct an addition to their existing single-family home as well as a move and connect the existing garage to their house. The property is located in suburban, single-family SSF zoning district and requires variance approval of section 5.1 for relief from the minimum yard, front yard setback requirement, the minimum side yard setback requirement, and the minimum floor area ratio, FAR requirement, and any other relief required on the Lowell zoning ordinance. Petitioner here this evening.
On Zoom? Yep. How's it going?
Good evening. Could you state your name and address for the record, please? Tell us about your project.
Sure. Okay. Hi, my name is Eric Mohica. I live at 854 Andover Street. I'm here tonight to seek the board's approval for a renovation project that my wife and I would like to complete for our single-family home. As part of the project, we'd like to add a primary suite, which includes building a closet and full bathroom. We'd also like to move our existing garage to connect it to our home and add a bonus room over the garage that will be used as a playroom for our two young children. We've discussed the project with our closest neighbors and have their support, and of course, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open up to the board. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My questions come directly from the DPD comments. Is the petitioner familiar with those comments or have a copy?
I haven't received any, any comments yet. I did get a couple of questions regarding our, you know, building floor area space, but that was, that was it.
Yeah, that, that's what I was going to ask about.
Okay, okay.
The, the exact square footage of the proposed addition.
The exact square footage? So I have a building lot area of 1,732 square feet is what I was provided by the architect.
Okay. And the length of the proposed driveway?
So the garage itself is going to be 24 by 24. The driveway, I don't have the exact measurements, but it's, it's going to be enough to fit one car at least, but, you know, we plan to use it for, you know, the kids to play. You know, I don't have, I'm not sure if we'll be using it for parking, that's why we'd like to improve our garage and be able to fit our cars there.
The comment from DPD specifically says that the minimum length for a driveway is 18 feet, but the plot plan only shows four and a quarter feet. So how would you...
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that's, that's existing right now, it's our existing garage that we have there. With the new garage, it's going to be actually bumped back about five and a half feet from where it is today, with a total with a set of about nine and a half feet in the street.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Mark. Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I actually don't have any questions regard, that was my main question, the fact that DPD mentioned that it was, there was a difference in the, in the footage for the driveway, because that's a very busy street. Yeah, I, I think I'm, I'm fine with this, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Van? Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the applicant, I also believe that the relief that the applicant is seeking is minimal. You know, I know they're looking for some side yard setback, front year, front rear side setback, and some floor area ratio requirements, but I think the addition makes sense in terms of it's not adjacent to the neighborhood and there's no abutters or neighbors against it, so I think it adds value not to his home but to the neighborhood. So overall, I think I could support this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van. Sean?
Thank you through, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I like the layout, I like the way it's set up, and it looks like it would work very well for your property. The garage is a little confusing to me, so the driveway in the proposed plot line I see is anywhere between, and I'm talking about driveway driving up to the garage. It's anywhere between 9.61 on one side to 4.25 feet on the other side, and then you got a little opening area that is entitled driveway slash patio. I guess what are the intentions with the driveway slash patio? Is that something that you're intending to use as an additional driveway, or is it...
No, I would say it's going to be used, today we use it as a, as a driveway, because it's a little wider than what it will be, but, you know, after the project, we plan to use it for, you know, the kids to be able to play, you know, in terms of their bikes, their scooters, you know, it's, it's, we don't intend to, to park any cars in there.
Okay. Yeah, I was kind of curious about that, because it looks like you get the bulkhead that sticks out in the, in the rear side of that area that, once this is done, you're probably not going to have a lot of space there for an additional car, so. But the driveway, as far as the existing garage, though, so you're pushing the, you're pushing the existing garage back 9.6, well, you're pushing the, the existing garage back, right?
Correct. It's going to be pushed back five and a half feet, so at the end, the beginning of the driveway, excuse me, the beginning of the garage will be 9.61.
Okay.
And, yep.
Okay. So the only parking utilized at that, in that area is going to be inside the garage, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you got two, you got to propose for two, two parking slots, right?
Yep. 24 by 24, correct.
24 by, okay. I think the question was then on the curb cut and getting up to the garage, what the existence of the curb cut is, because it looks like it's not laid out in the plot plan, but it's laid, it is, the only, the only guess we can make is laid out in the elevations and the, the floor plans that shows a 24, 24-foot opening. I think we're just looking to see what the curb cut is going, your curb cut's going to be going into those garages, and we just want to make sure that that does not exceed, that does not, not exceed what zone, exceed zoning, I think is what, 20 feet, Dylan? Yeah, 20 feet, so is that, what are your intentions on the curb cut?
Well, as part today, there's, there's no curb there today on that Holbrook street side. So, you know, I, I mean, we don't, you know, I could take that back with the architect to see what we can do. You know, what we're planning to do is just move it back and it's, you know, from where the existing garage is. So, you know, I could take that back to the architect to see what, what you would suggest.
Okay, so we'll just, we're probably going to condition that, that you maintain curb cut at 20 feet then, if that's, if that's okay with you.
Okay.
What?
Yeah.
I guess curb cut not to exceed, not to exceed zoning, I mean, we're not, we're not, so just, just we're not going to deal with any variance for our curb cut at this point, so I'll just say we'll condition that on the curb cut not to exceed zoning regulations, so. But, other than that, no, like I said, it's, it's a nice, nicely laid out project, and I wish you and your family the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions here, but I agree with my fellow board members that this does seem like a very viable project. What Sean was mentioning was the curb cut, so the existing plot plan shows driveway patio, existing garage, and maybe even additional pavement beyond the garage. That must be a total of 35-plus feet, that existing curb cut, if you will, and what we're stating in the condition that, or that the curb cut will not exceed what's allowed by zoning, which is 20 feet, which would be a nice enhancement, I think, for the street to have less pavement from the property entering onto the street. Is that the intention, though, that your patio space will not come to, out to the street? I just wanted to be clear with the applicant.
It actually, it actually does today. It does today, and it's in line with how the rest of the property is on the Holbrook street side, how they are today as well.
Right. And in the new configuration, when we're just talking about a driveway that meets zoning at a maximum with curb cut of 20 feet, that means that the area where your patio is does not come out to the street edge, that that's reduced. I think, so it'd be green space as though, like in front of the existing house, in front of the patio.
Yeah.
Okay?
Correct, yeah.
Great. And then we're looking for a condition that the driveway length be reduced from 18 feet to roughly 9.5 feet. And that's all that we're looking, I mean, I think the other, other relief that you're looking for is minimal, and I think that your choice to accept the curb cut restriction of 20 feet is great for the neighborhood. I really think that this addition does take advantage of the aspects of the existing house location in the lot and provide access to a very nice garage and amenity above the garage, so I think you did a nice job with these plans, and I'm just glad that we're able to get to the reduced curb cut to only, to meet zoning. Other than that, I think it's just those conditions that I could support. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, so you've heard the comments of the board, and you've read the comments from DPD. I have, I did visit the site, and fortunately, the residents are home, and I had a lengthy conversation and met their two wonderful children. I think the, the added space will, will suit your family needs, and it's... I think the added space will suit your family needs, and it's always, it's always nice when young families like yours decide to stay in the city, as did your friend, Mr. Ryan, and you expand your properties in order to stay, stay here, and you put together a qualified team of architects and a qualified builder, and you'll be able to move forward, you know, to satisfy your needs to stay here with your family and grow and continue your time here. And I think that's a credit. So we do have the two conditions related to curb cut and length of driveway. Any other comments or concerns by the board?
What's the length of driveway again?
Nine.
No.
Nine foot six inches. Nine feet six inches.
Not to exceed 9.6?
Nine feet six inches.
Nine feet six inches.
And the curb cut not to exceed 20 inch, 20 feet according to zoning board.
Less than that.
Not to be less than.
Not to exceed zoning dimensions.
Yep.
Okay.
So you in agreeance with those two conditions?
Am, yes.
Thank you. That being said, may I have a motion? Clark?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZBA 2022-26 for 854 Andover Street for variance approval under section 5.1 for minimum side yard setback, minimum front yard setback, and minimum floor area ratio to construct in addition to an existing single-family residential building and relocate and connect existing garage to the structure with the conditions that the curb cut into driveway and garage is not to exceed, exceed zoning dimensions, and the length of the driveway is not to exceed nine feet six inches.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second motion.
Second by Mr. McCarthy. May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
I approve with conditions.
Vice Chair Peck?
I approve with conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approve with conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approve with conditions.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Member Proco?
Approve with conditions.
Well, Mr. Mohica, you've been unanimously approved. We wish you the best of luck and enjoy your property upon completion.
Thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
Thanks for calling in. Moving forward on the new business, we have ZBA 2022-27 for variance of Harbor Freight Tools at 211 Plain Street, 6 and 6.3. Harbor Freight Tools has applied to the Lowell zoning board of appeals to erect an internally illuminated sign at 211 Plain Street. Property is located in the high-rise commercial HRC zoning district and requires special permit approval under 6 and 6.3 for internally illuminated signage and any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance. My understanding, petitioner is here via Zoom. Good evening, sir. You maybe tell us a little bit about your project.
Hi, actually, my name is Mel.
Ma'am, I apologize. You weren't up on the screen yet.
No, that's fine.
My sincere apologies that you've been in front of the board several times.
No, no problem.
I'm looking forward to a complete application. Thank you.
Great. The sign is to replace what was currently, or it used to be the Marshals. Harbor Freight Tools has started to refurbish the building with their build-out to suit their needs, and with that, they would like to put up their typical Harbor Freight Tools and their tagline, illuminated internally LED lit sign. Very simple project. It meets all the conditions for the typical two square feet per lineal foot of the building, and I think the only reason I'm here today is for the illumination itself.
Yes. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. That being said, I'd like to open up the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the public? Van? I mean, the board? Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Apology.
Thank you, sir. To the applicant, I think this is pretty standard, straightforward sign and marketing for this property is high-rise commercial building and district. I think the only requirement that I think I would like to see is the lighting and the signage, and when it turns on and off, it just correlates to the rest of the plaza and all that. So if the, if the applicant can just comply with that, I'll be fine with it, and I wish them the best of luck. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van. Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with the vice chairman. As long as, you know, it follows the standard guidelines with the time that the light's on and off after sunset and early sunrise, I would vote in favor of this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Judge. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proposed sign is consistent with others in the strip mall and poses no residential disruption. I'm in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Three, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say that I'm really glad to see another retail outlet taking advantage of this location and coming to the city and filling this vacant space. This plaza has done really surprisingly well in the last, I don't know, maybe 10, 15 years since the Target and the new ownership has taken over, and I'm really glad to see the low vacancy rate and the quick turnover in this plaza. And I think Harbor Freight Tools will be a great addition to the city as well. The restraint shown by the signage, we're under the square footage that's allowable, and it makes total sense to be internally illuminated like all of the signs in this, this development here, so I look forward to seeing this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean?
Straightforward petition, ditto to everything my colleagues have said, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So, so ma'am, we're going to look at the conditions regarding illumination, which would be one hour prior to sunrise, one hour after sunset, or closure, whichever comes first.
Does that correlate with, I mean, I know the chairman, vice chairman mentioned something that this correlates with the other businesses in the plaza? I mean, that's something that?
Yeah, I believe it does.
That's something that we can just say, just as long as it correlates with the other businesses in the plaza?
Yeah, I think we did the same thing with Target.
So?
Yep, that's fine. You're going to be, you're going to be in fine with that?
Yes, absolutely.
Great. So no need for a condition? We may have a motion?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZBA 2022-27 for 211 Plain Street for variance approval under section 6.3 for internally illuminated signage. Dylan, I guess if it's, does it have to be conditioned that the hours of illumination correlate with the remaining businesses in the plaza, or just leave it, leave it as is?
If you'd like, you can put that in. I think you mentioned?
Let me just throw it in there just to make sure.
Okay.
Okay. The condition being that the hours of illumination of the signage will correlate with those of the other businesses in the plaza, especially Target.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by the vice chair. May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
I approve with condition.
Vice Chair Peck?
I approve with conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approve with conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approve with conditions.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Member Proco?
Approve with conditions.
So your petition's been unanimously approved. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good night.
Okay. Moving forward on the new business, ZBA 2022-28, variance Tyler Provost at 42B Street, section 5.1. Tyler Provost has applied to the Lowell zoning board of appeals, seeking variance approval in advance of subdividing the lot at 42B Street. The property is located in the traditional two-family TTF zoning district. The proposed lot A would include an existing four-family dwelling, which would require variance relief from the minimum frontage, minimum side yard setback, minimum front yard setback, and minimum lot area requirements under section 5.1, and any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance. Proposed lot B would include a new two-family dwelling that will require variance approval from the minimum frontage, front yard setback, and minimum lot requirements under section 5.1, and any further relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance. We've been informed, petitioner is here by Zoom. If you could state your name and address for the record, tell us a little bit about this project.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Sarge. I'm representing Tyler Provost as the architect at 42B Street. So as you had said, we are seeking to subdivide the lot and build a new two-family. The two-family will be about 2,200 gross square feet, and we will need relief from minimum open area, open lot, frontage, and on the existing lot, we'll need relief from the front yard setback and side yard setback. In addition, we will need relief from the parking setback. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. That being said, I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board? Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My questions relate to the parking. How will, how will the parking be accessed for both houses?
So the proposed lot is going to have a 12-foot easement for the driveway, and that will be accessed for both lots. If you have A001, it's the shaded area right to the west of the proposed division.
Right here. This is the lot size.
Okay.
And that's an easement that allows that parking to happen.
All right.
So they float to both.
And all the parking is in the rear of that property? Is that it?
That's correct.
And it contains how many spots?
So the proposed is going to have four and, and eight for the existing.
Okay, so the eight of existing, okay. All right, all right, I get it.
Yes, existing, we have a 40-foot wide paved driveway, so they'll be reduced to 12 and all the parking will be moved to the rear.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Dennis?
Three, Mr. Chairman. I see some improvements here to the lot that are being made. So there is existing pavement right now on the, I guess we'd say, the east side of the existing house that isn't on the site plan, so the intent is to remove that existing pavement? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And there's also existing pavement on the north of the existing house, and those will be mulch beds with planting.
How are we handling trash at this site?
So right now, we have the trash cans on the rear, and it's, if you see where it says existing deck to remain, it's over in that area, and we would do something similar for the proposed, to the rear of the house.
Okay, so as a two-family and as a four-family, is it city services that are recycling and trash pickup?
Actually, Tyler?
Yes, as of now, these are city services, and to second what Jeff had said, all of the cans are stored behind the existing house and moved up to the curb when needed, and the plan is to do the same on the two-family.
Got it, okay. The parking in the back, so we'll be looking at with the two lots roughly, well, exactly eight spaces that'll be facing the adjacent property, and your dimension between that and the property is only one foot nine inches. What's your, what are you expecting to happen in that one foot nine inches? Is there a privacy fence? Is there landscaping? I think probably a fence is all we can fit, right?
Yeah, that's what we're anticipating.
Yep. As of now, there's some pretty well-established trees that have kind of grown around a chain link fence, and there was previously more of a privacy fence. At the moment, I'd be in favor of installing a privacy fence to go along with the tree line.
I think that we should make that as a condition just because of the additional roughly parking lot that the neighbors are going to be looking at, so I'd like to see a condition that we install a privacy fence no less than six feet high along the rear property line to screen the parking of both lots. But I'm quite surprised at how well you achieved a very compatible design here with the neighborhood, and we are looking at six units here. It's a very, very nice design. I love the idea that the parking's in the back, that we have green space on the side yard and in the front, that we just have a single easement driveway to service all of those cars. I think there's a lot of big wins here, and I think that it's worth us seeking relief for these variances that you're asking for. I just had that one condition for that screen in the back, but I'll listen to my fellow colleagues to see if we have any others. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Member McCarthy that this design is well-done. It looks like a lot of consideration was, was put in this to keep it in line with the rest of the neighborhood, and, and the fact that, you could also tell by the design that the applicant was very conscious of parking issues and tried to, you know, put something that's equitable for future residents. So I would be voting in favor of this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Van? Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, you know, I, I do think that they're seeking a lot of relief, but like my colleague said, they, they put a lot of effort and conscious effort and really put in mind the neighborhood structure and, you know, really putting together like a property and a home that's going to match the neighborhood. You know, even though I think they're seeking a lot of relief, I think, you know, this outweighs the need for housing, so, you know, and there's no opposition, so I can support this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Sean?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I agree with my fellow board members. I do like the fact that you're maintaining a little, trying to maintain as much green space as possible, especially that little strip and, you know, on the other side of the driveway between the, where the house, the new, new addition of the house is going to be. As far as the parking is concerned, the, I presume you're going to have plans of designating parking, dedicated parking spots to each residence? Are there going to be signage or?
Yes, that's correct.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so you're just going to have like signage designating like which, which side goes to which, which building?
Hopefully, hopefully numbered parking, so each, each unit has its own designation.
And what are the plans for snow storage as far as, I mean, there's not, there's not much a lot of space back there, but what do you guys got planned for snow storage?
Yeah, it's going to be tight, but we're hoping the southeast and southwest has some opportunity to push the snow in that areas.
Otherwise, just have it tracked off?
We could, yeah, yes.
Yeah, okay. But as long as you're in agreement with the condition that Dennis pointed out as far as installing a privacy fence, I think this project could, would, would be a benefit to the neighborhood, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, you've heard the comments of the board in positive favor, you know, I echo their, their sentiment. I think you, you showed restraint here. You, you took this particular property or able to make some changes that will allow both increased housing as well as take care of any parking issues in a dense area. So we only have that one condition, and you're in agreeance with it. And with that being said, may I have a motion?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2022-28 for 42B Street for variance approval for proposed lot A under section 5.1 for minimum frontage, minimum side yard setback, minimum front yard setback, and minimum lot area per dwelling unit, and for proposed lot B for approval under section 5.1 for minimum frontage, minimum front yard setback, and minimum lot size to subdivide existing lot and construct a two-family residential building on the newly created lot with the condition that the applicant is to install a privacy fence in the rear of the property that is no less than six feet high.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I second.
Second by Mr. Proco. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin?
I approve with condition.
Vice Chair Peck?
I approve with conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approve with conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approve with condition.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Member Proco?
Approve with conditions.
Well, gentlemen, you've been unanimously approved. We wish you the best of luck in your project.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you all.
Take care. Moving forward on the new business, ZBA 2022-29 for variance Regina Maderos at 33 London for variance, Regina Maderos at 33 Ludlam Street, Section 5.1 and Section 4.3.5. We are in receipt of communication seeking a continuance to either June 27th or July 25th. How's our agenda look for those evenings? Dylan, if you could?
There are two items currently on the June 27th meeting and nothing on the July 25th meeting.
Let's move it to June 27th, their first request. That being said, may I have a motion? Mr. Clark?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZBA 2022-29 for 33 Ludlam Street to continue the public hearing of this matter to June 27th, 2022.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approve continuance to June 27th, 2022, sorry.
Vice Chair Peck?
Approve continuance.
Member Callahan?
Approve continuance to June 27th, 2022.
Member McCarthy?
Approve continuance to June 27th, 2022.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Proko?
Approve continuance to June 27th, 2022.
Thank you. Moving forward on the new business, ZBA 2022-30 for special permit, Pineapple Realty LLC, Pineapple Realty Trust LLC at 52.1 Bolt Street, Article 12.5 Subsection F, Article 12.6 Subsection G, Article 12.1 Subsection Q. Pineapple Realty Trust LLC is applied to Lowell zoning Board of Appeals, seeking special permit approval at 52.1 Bolt Street. The proposal includes three uses on the property, material storage, vehicle storage, and material removal. The subject property is located in the light industrial LA zoning district. The applicant requires special permit approval pursuant Article 12.5 Subsection F for open lot storage of sand and similar materials. Per Article 12.6 Subsection G to park and store vehicles on the site. Article 12.1 Subsection Q for the removal of material and any other relief required in the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, Counselor, how are you?
Good evening, Chairman Perrin. Members of the board, gentlemen. Attorney John Cox, 375 Gorham Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. I represent Pineapple Realty LLC. As you've pointed out, Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting a couple of variances here pertaining to Article 12.5 to park some of his vehicles there in accordance with, I mean, I'm sorry, to store various materials there in accordance with 12.5F, parking some vehicles in accordance with 12.6G, and remove some material in accordance with 12.9Q. Since we filed this application, the DPD staff, Dylan and the people in his office, put together a memorandum dated May 13th, 2022, and brought up several concerns. After reviewing the memorandum and speaking with Dylan and the people in his office and a petitioner, we have removed one of the requests that we would be seeking. That would be to park vehicles on the site. I think the new plan that was submitted recently will show that, that there is now no request for parking on the site, which would take away number four and number five in the memorandum from DPD. The other things we added to the plan, we put evergreen trees in, as you noted in the new plan, adjacent to the neighborhood. We are going to install an eight-foot fence around the entire perimeter of the property. We are, as requested by DPD, we will build a berm adjacent to the neighborhood, understanding that clearly it's an industrial use and trying to minimize in any way the noise or disturbance to the neighborhood. This is a big site, and when Mr. McSawley bought the site back a year or so ago, it was just a big hill adjacent between, basically between these homes and the railroad tracks over there. Mr. McSawley has spent a lot of time, I'm sure money as well, in trying to create a lot that is workable, an industrial lot that is workable. And in doing that, clearly there were some issues that had to be resolved. He got a permit to, trying to think the word is, but to explode, for explosives, to, you know, bust up the rock that's there and what have you. He's been operating under that permit. I don't think there's been any issues as far as any of that goes. Clearly, the neighbors don't like it, and I understand that. I was over there one day when they were blasting, and it's, yeah, it's loud. The good news is, it's almost over. The elevation has been reduced and will be reduced by some 30 feet when this is done. We expect, really expect, that the blasting will end this Friday. That's coming from the person who is in charge of the blasting. They think that Friday will be it for the blasting. The plan would be for Mr. McSawley then to erect this berm that will be high above, you know, where the property is now. We wouldn't be able to put trees in right now, clearly, but that's going to be part of the plan. And then the second part that could cause some issues to the neighborhood, and we understand that, is Mr. McSawley being able to crush the rock that's on the site. I mean, I know nothing about blasting. It was kind of interesting when I was there that day. But clearly, they put in the explosives, they blast, those bigger rocks come out, and they have to be brought down to obviously a smaller size. And that's part of what he's going to end up storing on the property. So, you know, we are certainly willing, clearly, to put hours of operation in, which try to help the neighborhood as far as that rock crushing will go, and try to mitigate in any way we can. Mr. McSawley has, I spoke with him today about trying to move the rock crusher away from the neighborhood, away from the boundary line with the residences. And I think we might be able to do that, to bring it down and kind of maybe in the middle of the property and kind of build around it so that may mitigate noise and what have you from any of the blasting. Once it's done, it's going to be a very, very passive site as far as an industrial land goes. It's going to be, have bins, to have, could be loom, could be gravel, could be dirt, could be that type of material. Mr. McSawley's office is adjacent to this site. And, you know, it would be, once done, it'll be very, very passive for industrial use. It will be, you know, deliveries once in a while, and then smaller trucks, as I envision, like landscaping trucks, that type of thing that need loom or what have you. Those visits and deliveries will come through Meadowcroft. Will not go through the neighborhood, but will come through the industrial zone on the other side of basically the railroad tracks. As we know, City Lowell has about 10% of its land is zoned industrial. And to help the residential tax base, you need industrial, which is good, I guess, to have. You don't need it, but to help the residential tax rate and base, it's good to have industrial land that's productive. This land has not been productive. It's been vacant. It's been, it's done nothing for as long as I'm sure anybody can remember. So, this is a, we think, a good use of the property. We understand there's some, I'm sure the neighbors would say more than bumps, but bumps in the road to get there. Trying to mitigate it. Blasting will be over this week, being told, I'm told. And then the rock crushing will try to mitigate that with hours of operation, as well as moving it into a portion of the land that will not affect the neighborhood as much. So, that's kind of where we're at. Again, we had a very good conversation with DPD, and I want to thank them for their input. And we listened to them, and we'll obviously listen to the neighbors as much as we can to try to make this process get completed and then be something that'll be good for the city. So, clearly, here to answer any questions? Matt Hammer is someplace, Matt's right here, the engineer on the project. So, if you want to see a plan, there's maybe, although you, I think you have the plan, but if you want to see it tonight, we can put that out and show it to you and ask, try to answer any questions anybody?
Certainly, Counselor, we have the plans, but if you could, Mr. Hammer, if you could set up and as you usually do and provide that to the public, that's always very helpful. Thank you, Counselor. All documents are uploaded on the public website, but these outlines are always a helpful aid.
As they say, a picture's worth a thousand words.
Correct.
And that's going to be it. That's going to be the final product. Any questions from the board or from the general public? We're happy to try to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you for your attention, as always.
Thank you, Counselor. We appreciate you outlining this petition. Being said, I'd like to move forward to the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor, that portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening. If you could state your name and address for?
Frank Calhoun, 46 Crowley Street. It's more questions than specific opposition. The 12.5, storage of sand and similar materials, what exactly is similar materials? Is it going to include fertilizer, things that are going to cause odors, pesticides, things that are going to be chemically dangerous to the neighborhood? Article 6 is moot, they're not going to be parking vehicles there. Article 12.1Q, which I can't find in your information, but pertaining to that, for the removal of material and any other relief required, what does that mean, any other relief required?
So, as you reference, within the zoning ordinance, if approved, there's always a subsection, any other relief required that's associated to the direct relief being sought and approved. So, if it was a removal of products and other products had to be removed, that's the other relief is required.
Okay.
And as, so I just don't want to, I want to move forward and answer your questions. Counselor did mention that the storage items are going to be dirt, mulch, stone, landscaping materials. Explosive storage would not be allowed. That would come under a different permit. That is not permitted here. Vehicle storage has been wiped. And as far as pesticides, that's also permitted on the EPA. So, that would require a special permit, and that would also require?
Okay, well, it is a landscaping company, so I don't know what they use when they're doing their landscaping, but?
Yes.
I want to know if they're going to be storing pesticides there, any fertilizer or anything that's going to cause odors?
Can you refer, can you answer that, Mr. Hammer or Counselor? Either one of you gentlemen, will there be or will there not be pesticides and/or fertilizers stored?
Yes, that's correct.
So, there'll be none of those items?
Nothing, no. It'll be?
Landscape materials.
Sand, that type of thing. No fertilizer, none of that. We're happy to make that a condition.
Thank you. Petition is willing to make that a condition.
That's fine.
And they would have to seek the proper permits and licensing through the federal government as well.
Do we have hours of operation for this site?
That's open for discussion. I know that's going to be answered by the board.
Okay.
We will answer that. The petitioner has stated they are open to the discussion of what the hours of operation will be. I know it's one of my questions as well, and we'll certainly adhere to that.
Okay. I just know that there are other people in the neighborhood that have been woken up by the blasting. They work nights, you know? It's an issue. The rock crushing, are they only going to be crushing the rock that's on site, or will they be bringing rock in to crush later on?
Any other questions, sir?
Yep, one more.
Okay.
The eight-foot fence high, says it's going to be a tight fence. What does a tight fence mean?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
It says it's an eight-foot fence, tight fence. What is a tight fence?
Okay, so we'll have all those questions answered for you. Mr. Counselor Cox? Yes, please. And then we're going to keep the public hearing open. We'll answer these questions for you, and then we'll move on to others wishing to speak.
Want me to answer these questions now, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please, where they're fresh. The products being stored are landscape materials, i.e. sand, mulch, soils and dirts of some kind.
Yeah, no fertilizer?
No fertilizers, no explosives, which we all know would require special permitting. Also, they would require?
Yes.
Governmental controls. The question, the question was, rocks, are they being crushed from the rocks on property, or are there being rocks brought in?
The only thing that's going to be crushed on site is that which is on site. In other words, nothing's coming in off-site to be crushed there.
So, land site material crushing only?
Correct, yes.
And finally, sir, I'm going to run the meeting. So, I'll bring you back. Counselor's answering the questions. And we'll bring them through the chair. We're going to answer all your questions. That's why we're here.
And as far as?
Eight-foot tight fence, could you just explain?
I'm sorry.
Tight fence, you mean a bound fence, a privacy fence?
I don't know what a tight, I think that came from DPD. I think that's one of their phrases. I don't know what a tight fence is either, to be honest with you. You know that?
Matt does. Mr. Hammer, sorry.
I believe the intention of the comment is is that it won't have air gaps like a picket fence. It's going to be a solid fence.
Yeah, solid fence or a lattice privacy fence to eliminate any of that. And thank you. I believe those are the questions for now.
And as far as hours of operation, that's certainly something we're willing to discuss with the board and, you know, work with.
Is there an operational schedule that you have in mind? Is it a 6:00 AM to 5:00? Is it a, it would be a landscaping schedule?
I guess the biggest thing is what would be most objectionable to the neighborhood. Earlier in the morning, obviously, you can't go late at night, but I don't know, something like 8:00 to 3:30 or something like that for the crushing, yes, yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Yep, okay. Thank you. Sir, do you have another question before I move on to others?
How long is the stone crushing going to go on?
Not like during the date, but yeah, how many months? It could be several months. Could be several months. That's the million-dollar question. I don't know. I wish we had, we talked about this a lot. You know, it's just, it's a question of, you know, a lot of different things that have to come together. But we want to get this done as quickly as possible. And I know that's not a good answer for you, but I can't sit there and say three weeks or two months, or I don't know. I really don't know.
So, we can define an hour operation. Certainly, it's part of the environment to which this business is being operated on the industrial land, so we'll have to take that into consideration. Any others wishing, sir, does that satisfy you? Sir, does that satisfy your questions? Okay, thank you. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? Good evening. If you could state your name and address for?
I just actually have a few concerns. My name's Amy Searls. I live at Bowden Street. And it's mostly the dust that's going to be up with all the trucks coming in and out and with the crushing in general. And then there's also a lot of trucks that are pulling in and out of, what is that, Meadowcroft, the side road that they had put in next to the railroad where they're not really stopping? So, they're just kind of barreling through. And it's just, it's been a lot of concerns with a lot of the residents over in that area.
So, as they come off the property or newly formed entrance?
Not on Bolt Street. They have that little side street that's next to the railroad, yeah. It's kind of, my vehicle's bigger, so I'm just going to keep going. And we've actually seen a few of the vehicles go in between the train tracks before the train's coming, when the lines are going, for the track, yeah, for the train to come through.
Mr. Hammer?
So, it's just kind of the traffic and then the dust control. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I should have mentioned that earlier, Mr. Chairman. We will have a water truck on site to keep the dust down. We understand, you know, as he goes through this and there's activity over there, it does raise a lot of dust. And a water truck will be there to try to keep it down.
Great. Now, as it relates to that entrance of cars not stopping off of Meadowcroft?
Well, I can say that we've added a three-inch wrap-stone mat Well, I can say that we've added a three-inch wrap stone mat where you go out onto Meadowcroft.
Would it be in our best interest to the neighbors if we placed the sign at the end of that drive, warning drivers to stop? I mean, we don't have, we don't have the authority to create a stop sign, that would be traffic and engineering, but perhaps, like --
Not an issue at all, Mr. Chairman?
I would assimilate that to any gravel site that has trucks entry and exit, you know? Caution, exiting, commercial areas, just something to, just to help the drivers who are
No question, no question.
Always on a time clock, and we know how that can work.
One other thing, if I may, about the blasting over the, the rock crushing over the summer? We could do something like a monthly or quarterly, or not quarterly hopefully, but a monthly progress report to DPD if that would help. You know, to let them know what kind of, where we're at, and what kind of a schedule we're on.
Yeah, similar, yep. Ma'am, if you need, ma'am, if I could trouble you to just come to the lectern, state your name and your address for the record and voice your concerns?
I'm Frank Calhoun, 46 Crowley Street.
Thanks for coming in.
I'm really, really concerned about the noise that's going to happen, what they can do to minimize this when they crush this stone. Because if you sat on my porch, it's unbelievable, the noise that that stone crushing makes. And they have crushed stone there without a permit, just to let you know, that has happened. I am a 90-year-old, I'm 88, my husband's 90. The only thing he can do is sit on the porch and in the yard. And you cannot do that when that stone is being crushed. If anybody ever heard it, it's unbelievable. And that's my concern, what are they going to do to make this stone crushing minimized? How are they going to make a berm to stop the noise? Because it's You can't, you can't stand even in the house, even in the house, if you close your windows, the noise is unbelievable. And that's my main concern right now, is that stone crushing, to spend the next four or five months listening to that. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate you coming out this evening.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly, Counsel.
As I stated earlier, I think normally the berm would be constructed like at the end of this process. We will construct the berm in the beginning of this process to try to help minimize any noise. The rock crushing machine would be, again, taken away from the border of the homes and put more in the center of the land with a smaller, like, area built up around it a little bit, and then, right, and then the berm itself should be like a pretty good-sized berm up near the homes.
So as Mr. Hammer's indicating, and as you're stating, the mitigation is moving the stone crushing unit away from the residential area, berming it in the section and area to which you're showing, to help minimize?
I just want to make note that there is a electrical easement
Yeah.
line in between that area, and this area is going to be depressed down
Okay.
below ground. They're higher up.
There are also some trees, not a lot right now, but some trees that remain on the border between the property and some of the homes, not all of the homes.
And that movement's taken place already? The stone, that unit's already been moved? The machine?
I don't think it's been moved yet. It will be moved, more into the center of the property, kind of built up around it, as Matt suggested, it's going to be a little deeper than the land. And then build up a little bit around there, and then a new berm will be constructed next to the homes to try to minimize, you know, the noise. I understand it's not perfect, I understand that, you know? Right, exact. No, I was, I shouldn't be --
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? Just state your name and address for the public record?
Jeff Thomas, 76 Bowden Street, also our co-chair of the South Lowell Neighborhood Group. It just concerns, and I want to echo the director butters to the property. For me, there's a big concern with the entrance and exit there. It runs right along the railroad. I see the railroad gates getting taken out on a frequent basis. I believe it's too tight. I can't believe the railroad allowed it to be that tight, but there's a big issue there, I believe it's a big safety concern. I know you just stated, you know, about putting up potential signage, trucks entering, exiting, whatever, but that's a big, big concern of mine. We already have a big issue up the top of the street, coming off of Moore Street with trucks. I see turning radiuses and all that being a big, big issue there. Dust control, I do this for a living, it's a mess, it's a mess. I know they mainly just going to wet down the surface. I'd say if there's any way that you could make it more of a sprinkler system, to spray into the air, somehow, some way, it does minimize the dust floating up and going into the neighborhood. From the crushing specifically, not really the truck traffic, but just from the crusher itself. And like I said, I just echo the neighbors' concerns. I live down off outer Gorm Street, and I can hear the hammering, and I live a ways away. Chairman, Clerk Callahan knows exactly where I live. It's a little ways away, and I can hear it clearly. So it's a real concern for the neighbors directly, for the noise, and like I said, I just want to echo that. And I know that Mr. McSorley's met with us. I appreciate the no-truck storage, he did state that in our meeting, that that was not going to happen, so I'm glad that was taken off the table. So, you know, I get that he's really trying to work with us here and whatnot, and believe me, I'm not really, I'm not trying to hurt a local business. And I don't want to hurt a local business. Just he's got to, he's got to work with these neighbors over there, like, I believe someone said it's a landscaping company. They start early in the morning, so that hours restrictions, even when they're done rock crushing and their regular hours of operations, trucks coming in and out, trying to get loaded for the day, that's going to be early in the mornings, guys, so that's a concern as well. So that's all I really got to say. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for coming out, appreciate that. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Sir, you satisfied, all your questions have been answered prior to closing a public hearing? Thank you, we appreciate everyone coming out this evening. That being said, public hearing is now closed, I'd like to open up to the board, Sean?
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. So I guess let's start with the hours of operation, Counsel. Well, I guess my first question, maybe to Dylan, because I saw in the memorandum, there was discussion about, you know, the hours of operation obviously being concerned, there was discussion, but a proposed condition of having the building commissioner determine what the hours of operation were. Why would we, can we, we can do that, can't we? If we're going to grant this, possibly grant a special permit, couldn't we set the hours of operation? Or why do we have to ask the building commissioner to do it?
You can set the hours of operation. That was just a proposed condition.
Okay, no, no, I didn't know if there was some other reason why we would have to, I know it was a proposed condition, but instead of it to be approved by the city's building commissioner, I just wanted to see if there was some reason why we would have to, you know, go to the, have the city building commissioner do that instead of us?
Nope.
Since we have the permit granting authority.
You can set hours, or you can leave it up to his discretion.
Okay, so I guess now getting on that. So I want to get back on the rock, the rock crushing. You said it was going to be only landsite material crushing only, so, and there's going to be no material brought on-site for crushing? So does that mean that the rock crushing is not going to last forever, it's only going to be for a particular, only for a particular, like, period of time? Once the operation, once operations are up and running, then it's just, then it's just simply?
Just don't know what, how long it's going to be, but yes, you're absolutely right.
Okay, so it's not going to be forever?
No.
It's just, well, you know, putting the site together, getting everything straightened out in the interim, and getting it all squared away? And then eventually the rock, the rock crush is going to go away, and there's going to be no?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Okay, so that, I mean, and understandably so, you know, you can't predict the future and how long, how long that's going to last, so, I mean, that makes sense, so. And I do appreciate the fact that you're trying to alleviate it as well by putting it in the area of the, sorry. The screen keeps going out here. Yeah, the material, the storage bins, so the storage bins, what's, I mean, what's just going to be planted there is pretty much your standard, you know?
Correct.
Sand, mulch, all that other stuff, but, so, but that's also, that whole area is going to be blocked off as well, and the rock crush is going to be right in front of those storage bins?
Correct. And the gate up the access road, there'll be a gate on that as well, that'll be secure.
Okay. Mr. Hammer?
Let me clarify, rock crusher is to take care of the rock that's been blasted out.
Okay.
Once all that rock is removed and the site is cleared down to level, the rock crusher will be taken off-site.
But for the interim time, that's just going to, you're going to maintain it in that area to alleviate the?
Correct, the bins would, the storage bin areas would go in afterwards.
Okay. So Putting the rock crusher, the hours of operation for the rock crusher aside, since that's not going to last forever, how many vehicles are we anticipating they're going to be in and out of the property on a daily basis as far as?
Once the property is squared away?
Yeah.
I think Jeremy's talking about, you know, a couple of deliveries, a week maybe, or something like that? And then, you know, they say loom, and then loom would go in the storage areas, and then, you know, we would expect like smaller vehicles, like landscaping vehicles, to come in and load up, you know, the loom and go out. So how many, would you have any idea? I don't know honestly how many trips per week. I think it would be mostly the smaller vehicles, you know, getting the loom or the crushed rock or whatever they're picking up, right? I think that would be more, and I don't think that, I mean, those vehicles aren't that big, I don't believe. But obviously they have to be delivered, so that delivery would take, I would think, once a week, twice a week, you know?
And to that extent, it's just basically the, it's pickup and delivery of all the material only, and then they're off the lot and going about doing their, their daily routine, and then
Exactly.
In and out, so. Okay. And what, I mean, I know you maintain that possibly a water truck on-site. I mean, what is the possibility of even putting in some sort of other, like, sprinkler system or something that could maybe alleviate some of this?
We wouldn't be able to physically put in a sprinkler?
There's no water on-site.
There's no water on-site, yeah, okay. It was brought up by one of the speakers, so I just wanted to see how that, how that would work, but. Okay. Well, we're still, we're still going to discuss the hours of operation and see if we can come to some some kind of happy medium on this. I mean, you mentioned previously, what's a typical, a typical day for, that they, that they start operations, and when do they typically end? I mean, any idea of like, how it goes, I mean, as far as, when do they expect like the first truck to be on-site? Like, when operations are up and running, everything's done, when do they expect like the first truck to be on-site, like, to pick up?
I guess that's a million, I mean, during the day, you mean?
Yeah.
What do you think, Jeremy?
Our current business now, we're at the end of Bolt Street.
If you could just state your name and address for the record, please?
Jeremy McSorley, I live on Clark Road in Lowell.
Thank you.
So currently, our operation on Bolt Street, we start typically at 5:30 every morning, and we finish, really, there's no end time. You know, usually around 6:00 or 7:00 at night, you know, in the busy season.
Yeah.
So I don't expect that, but landscaping typically is early in the morning, and, you know, we typically finish late in the evening.
Okay. All right. Because I'm trying to wrap my, I think I'm trying to wrap my head around between the difference between setting a set of hours, setting hours for while you're setting, while you're putting everything up and operation while there's rock crushing and all that going on, and then, once everything's all set and done, then don't have to restrict your hours, you know, for your operation to come in and out, especially during the summer months when, you know, there's more light and more time to get work done. I guess, as a board, I guess we can, I'll listen to my other fellow board members, we can float some ideas around on that. But I guess the next question would be like during the winter months, you probably, there's not much, do you have, are you doing anything during the winter months too, or is that?
We're a large snow operation, but a lot of that takes place out on the sites, so it wouldn't be too destructive, you know, with the snow operation in the winter. But it's busy from us from, you know, April till probably November.
Well, for the purposes of this site, I mean, there wouldn't be any need or intentions of using the site for the snow operations, I guess, right? Because you're not, you're not going to be storing trucks on there now, because you took that out, so.
Correct.
So pretty much, this is just going to be seasonal, this site's pretty much going to be operation seasonal only, really, right?
Pretty much, yes. Sand and what might be left of the gravel or stone.
Yeah, of storage, that's.
We do that throughout the winter.
Yeah, okay. Okay, that's all I have for the time being, I'll listen to my fellow board members and see where we can go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. And Sean.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions, but I kind of think this is similar to what we had in front of us a couple of months ago, that I think we put a six-month administrative review as a condition. I don't know if my fellow board members, I mean, if we say the hours of operation, 7:00 AM, 7:00 PM, with a six-month administrative review, just to kind of see if that works, or if that should be changed, you know, something in that nature, I think, might make sense. Just so that everyone can understand how everything's working out on the site, and if there needs to be some modifications. The, Mr. Hammer, the site plan. We have a topo plan that you provided, where you're showing a grade of 112. And then at the top of that berm, by the electrical easement, the grade changes quite a bit, 124, 134. It's quite, so there's roughly a 12-foot grade change on that hill, to maybe a 22-foot grade change?
Yeah, it varies along that section behind that neighborhood, it actually goes up and down through that back area. So it's not exact, that plan was obviously taken off of the Lowell GIS, which had the topography on it. And then we were, our intention of that plan was to show what we think approximately the finished grade will be after the blasting has brought itself down to the grade, which is essentially at the grade where the industrial buildings lot is next door.
So if that's correct, that we have a minimum of 12 feet of grade change, and in some cases it's more than that, it's almost 20?
This will be approximately 30 feet below.
30 feet of grade change?
Yeah, the grade behind where the neighborhood is.
So where does the fence go, and where does the evergreens go?
The upper tier, so where the existing grade is now, the fence will be put along that grade at the power line easement.
Sure.
And then the site's going to get, is being dropped down approximately 30 feet in grade.
So if we have an eight-foot fence, I think I saw, on top of the, roughly 38 feet to the top of the fence?
To the top of the fence, yeah.
To the grade?
Correct.
And the operation is, I don't know, maybe 10, 12 feet high with the mounds of material at the most?
Yeah, I do not believe you'll be able to visually see the operation.
You won't be able to see it, right? And then if there's a cloud of dust above that, the cloud of dust hovers a distance above it, but, yeah, I think that this is probably so far away from the neighborhood with the easement for the electrical.
Right.
And then the, so far below.
Right.
That the issue is probably one of understanding what we have here, and it probably is going to work out, I think, is kind of how I see it.
And the trees that you see in through the easement area or along the easement area are remaining. So there is going to be some vegetation that will remain adjacent to the easement, to the residential area, and as well as the edge of the easement against our area of the lot.
Okay.
So that he, there have been some trees that have remained.
Okay. The rock crushing piece is a real kind of stumbling block. So we have rock crushing going on, and it's generating a noise level that is excessive for the neighbors. And you intend to keep that going for as long as it takes, something like three months? And you intend to keep that going for as long as it takes, something like three months or four months. Is that what we're saying? All right. So, I think that kind of pain and aggravation that's being, you know, charged to the neighbors, neighborhood, we should put some limitations on those hours, definitely, I think. What do you suggest?
Well, I, I didn't get all of that unfortunately. I've got allergies or whatever, so, but what we would, I think, suggest is we could do a, as I said, a, a progress report to the neighborhood, maybe a month and, a month after the, the rock crushing starts to see where we're at and, and, I mean, it's, it's obviously in Mr. McSorley's best interest to get this done as quickly as he possibly can. He can't start using his land until it's, until it's developed, right? So the sooner he gets this, this rock crushed, then, then the sooner he can start utilizing that, that piece of property, obviously. So, I don't know if this answers your question, but if we did a progress report, whatever the board would suggest as far as what are the intervals to tell the, the neighborhood, it would be happy to meet with the neighborhood on a regular basis and tell them where we're at and, and where we, how quickly we expect it to be over with.
I'm, I'm, I'm hearing you, but I'm just looking for, do, does the rock crushing start at 8:00 AM and finish at 4:00 PM? Or does it run from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM? How, how does that rock crushing operation operate?
Yeah, well, obviously, you know, soon, the more time he has to crush rock, the sooner he gets it done. I mean, it's a catch-22 clearly, but we would go along with, with, I mean, the board obviously is, is reasonable in this and understands the, the obstacles in front of us. And so, yeah, I mean, something reasonable where, where he could get some, some work done and wrap it up sooner, yeah, I mean, we'd, we'd be, we'd be amenable to that.
I just know if I lived in that neighborhood, I would not be home. I would want to be leaving the house at 8:00 AM when the rock crushing started and coming home at 5:00 PM when the rock crushing's over. That's how I would like to manage that kind of aggravation.
I totally, I totally agree.
So I would suggest that we kind of put some limits on the hours, you know, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM at least.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
For the rock crushing operation, maybe just limited to five days a week.
I mean, that's kind of a condition that, whatever, if the board feels comfortable with that, then there's certainly something we.
Just as a livable kind of, you know.
Yeah. I mean, we'd, we'd love to make it, you know, one to two, but if that was, if that was a
I know.
It'd be there all, it'd be there forever trying to wrap it up. So, you know, something like eight to five, I'm sure that's something we
Monday through Friday.
We wouldn't crush rock beyond that or before that or after that or anything. If that's what the board wanted, then that's what we will do.
Okay, and you mentioned something about the rock crusher being relocated away from, further away from the neighborhood?
Yes, what, yeah, I think as Matt pointed out, try to get like there more in the center of, of the property, away from the, the borderline, the boundary line with the, with the house, the homes. If we, if we're able to do that, we would also try to not, not, you couldn't, can't bury it, but kind of submerge it and kind of make a mini, mini berm around it and then a bigger berm up, up at the, the boundary lines, where hopefully that would, that would minimize a lot of the noise.
So there's no sound studies being done here, so no one really knows exactly how the sound deflects. So the further away from the berm, does it, does it, is it, is the sound waves more adverse for the neighborhood versus closer to the berm? I, I'm not sure.
Right.
But I'm guessing that you want that sound to deflect away from the neighborhood versus
Of course, yes.
project over the berm.
Of course.
Okay. I don't know if we put a condition that we do a sound study, but I just don't know what I, 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 I don't know how I would live for three or four months.
I don't either.
With this event going on in my backyard.
I, it's, it's, it's a difficult question, clearly, and, and one that I can tell you, we will try to minimize to the max, you know? And I think the berm, I think, I think having it kind of submerged a little bit and then having it away from the, the boundary line will help.
Okay.
It's never going to go away unfortunately. We're not trying to pretend that it will.
Now, I understand there's no vehicle storage on the site, but there would be a front-end loader or some mechan
Yes.
item. There will be maybe a couple of delivery trucks that would be operating for the company, I imagine?
That's what we expect, yeah.
And there would be maybe a couple of employee vehicles?
Uh, I don't know, probably not. His, his office is like adjacent to this.
Okay.
So, I, I would assume that they would, somebody needed to pick some stuff up, they would contact him and you could have one of his guys go up, open the gate, be there to, to
Okay.
you know, make the, make the
Okay.
delivery, not delivery, but whatever, and then they would be gone, you know?
All right, and so it's a minimal operation for the actual vehicles that are stored on the site, like you said?
Yeah, we will not store any vehicles on-site up there.
The front-end loaders don't get stored on the site?
I don't think we can. I, I don't believe we'd be able to. I think they'd have to come off-site every, every day. I, I believe, wouldn't they, Matt?
Sir, if I could trouble you again to speak for public record for the, thank you.
We, we've been moving them back to our location at our office just because of the vandalism that's occurred. But we, we would like to be allowed to leave the front-end loader on-site and not have to drive it down Bolt Street and back
I agree.
every day. Once the site's secured, I, I believe the vandalism will stop.
Okay. I, I, I think that makes a lot of sense. I think driving it back and forth is a little bit more of a, I don't know, risk. Okay. I think I understand this and I, I am looking forward to the operation being functional because I could use someplace close by to go get my landscaping materials, so that sounds good to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize for not making eye contact. I'm referring to some notes that I've been taking during the, during the discussion. I thought that the, that, that the residents who come up to speak, no one was trying to kill the project. They said, "We have concerns," and that's fair, and I thought those concerns were raised in a very legitimate and reasonable manner. I also believe that the counsel for the petitioner answered your questions in a very satisfactory manner. And I believe that the concessions that have already been made and what they propose to do to, to achieve this project, I think they should be commended for those. I don't say this lightly. I'm, I'm, I'm on the outskirts of that neighborhood and I live directly behind the old 1400 Motors project. Well, I know a little bit about the pain that a neighborhood incurs for the progress that we're trying to achieve. And, and I think that's the way we have to look at it. I'm, I'm speaking for someone who walked in your boots. You know, there, there is an inconvenience in a project like this, there's no doubt. But there's also that short-term inconvenience. There is a long-term benefit to the city. And that, that's what this board has to, has to consider. The, I, my untrained eye, when I visited the site, I thought that ultimately, when this business was up and running, was, it was going to be hidden from the neighborhood. I liked that fact. With the berm and the way the petrograph, the topography is, really not even going to, going to see that. I think that ultimately, it's not going to be disruptive. In fact, this is what allows me to vote in favor of this. It's a very passive use of, of industrial land, and that's what we as neighbors have, have to, have to consider. The devil you know is much better than the one you don't. And the expected use of this property is absolutely passive. So the disruption to your everyday lives that you're going to incur now are going to be alleviated. And ultimately, it'll, I, I believe it'll, it'll fit nicely in the neighborhood. I'm going to support this petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For, for the members of this board know that I've always had one passion, and that is anyone that doing any kind of a commercial venture or residential venture should always involve the neighbors. And I appreciate the fact that this applicant has been involved in the neighbors. And as member Barry said, it doesn't sound like the neighbors are opposing, you know, this project itself, but just have some concerns. And, and of course, you know, as a, as a business, you don't live there, but the residents are impacted. And I, I feel that if you address their concerns, I know you can't have a sprinkler there, but you, you are trying to accommodate the fact that you should have a, the water truck there. I don't know if this is something that we can condition, just the fact that this should be continuous, that, to ensure that the dust does not impact the neighbors. Because from a health perspective, we don't know who suffered from asthma or anything like that, that dust would have a negative impact. So I, I do appreciate the fact that, you know, from, from, from a business perspective, you are working with the community to ensure that there is minimal impact. Counselor, now, I think you said in the beginning that you, you were going to address items four and five, is that correct? I'm sorry, I, I do have allergies as well, so I'm not sure if I heard you correctly.
Yes, I, I believe it's on the memorandum from DPD staff. It was items four and five from that memorandum dated
Four and five go away.
May 13th.
Yeah.
Can I believe, four and five both deal with storing vehicles on the site.
Yeah.
And we have said we will not store vehicles on the site.
Okay.
The front-end loader, that's, you know, that has to come off the site every day, that has to come off the site every day. That's, we will, we are not storing vehicles on the site. That was a commitment that we made to DPD, we make to, to the board tonight. So as far as if that front-end loader is a problem, then it's going to have to come off every day.
Yeah. Thank you. I, I appreciate that. Also, and again, I'm asking because I want to make sure I, I did hear correctly, did you, did you say that the blasting will be ended this Friday or was it something else?
I'm sorry?
I apologize.
Yes, the, the person in charge of the blasting has told Mr. McSorley it will end on Friday. Now, if a hurricane hits or something like that, I don't, I don't know, but as far as, I'm making a commitment that I was told that, that it will end on Friday. And then unless some, something crazy happens, that will be, that will be the end of it.
Okay, all right, thanks. Again, I, I'm, I'm looking at the point that you are trying to mitigate as much as you can for the neighbors. And that's why I, I just needed to hear that for the record again. And you said that you were moving the crushing machine to the center of, and that's under the new site plan, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's in this location right now?
Ah, okay. And where is it now? Oh, currently?
It's in here.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Yeah. So again, I would like to vote in favor of this. I, I just, I, I want to make sure that the condition that we set forth and that it's palatable to the neighbors. I mean, the, the young lady mentioned that her husband is 90 years old and he sits in front every day. And I'm sure if I'm 90 years old sitting in front, I wouldn't want to hear that noise every day. So as long as they feel like it's coming to an end, I, I think if they're satisfied, then I, as a board member, could be satisfied.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Judge. Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To you, sir, you know, I, I just, I do want to applaud the neighbors and the others coming out tonight, just to voice your concerns. I know it's not always easy, and trust me, it does get easier on this side, you know, talking about all these potential issues. And I think tonight, like my colleague said, there's been a lot of, of scaling back, downsizing, reduction from the applicant and from Mr. McSorley. You know, I, I think there's been a lot of concessions, like, like my colleague said, tonight. I think that the two biggest things for me, Mr. Chairman, is probably the, the noise and the, the air quality or the, the dust, the debris. I think one of the neighbors who's in the similar field of, you know, construction landscaping suggested the sprinkler system. And I think people said, "There's no water, hook-up a system." I think something can be done with that in terms of, you know, might be a little more investment from Mr. McSorley. But I think, I think overall it, it just helps with, you know, the quality of life for everyone around there. I mean, if, you know, if that was my mother, my aunt, my sister, my brother, you know, my family, I, I would be concerned. I think Mr. McSorley wants to do the right thing. He's, he seems like a very reasonable man. So I, I would like to see some kind of sprinkler water system, not just a hose, like, like one of the neighbors said. And I think, for me, just doing a little quick, quick little search online, in terms of the noise mitigation, there's, there's, there's some kind of technology out there. You know, it's, it's obviously a little bit of an investment too, but you know, whether it's, it's called some kind of outdoor sound blanket or outdoor sound curtain, it'd help mitigate some of the noise. I think, you know, if we can do some of that stuff, that'd be great, Counselor Cox, to, to, to your client. You know, I, I think overall, I think people are trying to do the best for, for the neighbors and for the business. Like people said, we, we want to see this business succeed, but we want to make sure it's done, you know, at, at the benefit of everyone involved, not, not just, you know, the, the business owner and, you know, I, so those are my comments, Mr. Chairman. I, I think, I think if we do something with the noise in terms of the sound.
It's one of those situations, as Attorney Cox has noted, the end result is going to be a minimal industrial land use. I could think of several other continuous businesses that could go in there, not to mitigate the concerns of, of the drilling and the, and the banging and the, the blasting. The concessions have been made. I think several of them are as a result of the communication amongst the neighbors because they genuinely do have concerns. I've, I've received several phone calls on this petition. Credit of the Vice Chairman, they do have those, those, those sound boxes. Not saying you have to purchase one, I think you could make one with some temporary fencing and I think it's something that you could, you could look into. Not to give you another expense, I, I certainly understand that. The other pieces, the hours of operation from the whole, from the whole piece of the operation, from the landscaping finished piece, we're going to talk about this in length later. You have the right to operate a business. You have the right to operate a business from 7:00 AM. You know, that does go and coincide with the noise on it. And I think there are similar sites, not, not here, I know of one in Draken, I know of one in Barica, where it's landscape based and those hours are, are heavy. As far as the blasting or the rock crushing, blasting is scheduled to stop on Friday. I think the rock crushing, at a minimum, we should reduce. We are in a, you know, it, it, it's a catch 22, right? If we minimize the amount of time you can do, it's gonna lengthen the amount of time you have to, you have to live with this. And frankly, nobody here can tell you, because you're living it, unless we, unless we go over for lemonade. I certainly think a Monday through Friday operation, given the citizens and the neighbors the weekend off, also gives the rock crusher the weekend off, because he's gonna be trembling by the end of the day. And I, I personally think a fair hours of operation is that eight to five that I, eight to four, eight to five that I heard. And again, understanding that that may put an extra 30 days or two weeks on it, I'm not really sure what that timeline is, but the petition has already brought forward as another mitigation to self-report. Member McCarthy has already brought the idea of a six-month administrative review. I agree with that. I think that's, that's totally in line of what we're doing here and complement to, to the reporting. I think if we use all those, all those vehicles to minimize and mitigate this, I think, I think Labor Day is gonna be a celebration of some lemonade on your porch. And I, I'm hoping it's, it's gonna be before that. The due diligence on this site since the onset, I've spent a considerable amount of time, I've received a lot of calls, I've been stopped at CVS regarding this. And this is a concern not only in the neighborhood, but people, you know, in other parts of the city. And I, and I think it's a credit to both sides that you've come this far together. Again, I, I do think that if, if it wasn't this operation, I can only imagine what could have gone here. And it might, would have been a maximum use. Several years ago, this site was looked at, and that would have been a maximum use. Unfortunately, that was, that never came to fruition. Those are my comments, we, we are. Sir, I will open the public hearing for one brief shining moment.
Thank you. I just, I've just been reached out to. Is there possible, I, I know he, the six-month review from Mr. McCarthy there. I was reached out to, can we potentially, just on the neighbors' aspect of it, maybe look into just a review of this and how it's going for them in maybe 60 to 90 days, instead of the six months? In six months, it could be done, and you know, we're not gonna be here no more, you know what I mean? Yeah. But it's gonna be alongside of them, obviously. So maybe 60 days, I, I would say, but I, I mean, it's just a, just an ask.
No, I appreciate that, that's a valid point. Attorney Cox has already brought that he's gonna be doing monthly self-reporting. As a precedent, as a, from a board standard, a six-month is what we can do. We can, we can't, we can't do anything other than that. I think the self-reporting is gonna be indicative of, of what's going on over there, and so is the neighborhood, and the neighborhoods, you know, reporting any concerns or, or comments or complaints either to DPD, Inspection Services. And certainly, sir, as the Chair of the Neighborhood Committee, you have direct hands-on to City Hall and to that access. The six-month review is, is, is a precedent that's part of our, our process. We, we can't shrink that timeframe by law. I do understand that. The only other comment or concern I, I do have, and Mr. McCarthy brought it up, is the front end loader. I know you've already had conversations with no vehicles on site personally. As a person who is in, in the field, quasi-in the field, I, I think it's more of a detriment and a danger moving that piece of equipment on and off the site on a daily basis. I think it creates a public hazard. I think it creates more noise than dust, because we're not gonna be able to follow that water truck. So from my, from my standpoint, and I, and I see some agreeance forward and left and right here, that I, I think that's something we can, we can make as a condition, because I think it. Have that, we, we're in the business, right? We don't want front end loaders going up and down the street. No. You know? Yep, so, so I think if we move forward and we can revisit that as a condition that the.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna give these neighbors my card.
Certainly.
Please have, please call me.
Yep.
You know, we expect to have some reports as we go along and where we're at.
Perfect. Okay. All right, so we're gonna, great. And, and frankly, this is what, this is what government and boards and citizen petitioners, this is what, what it really is all about, having open communication, understanding the good, bads and the, and the indifferences and come into an, an open negotiation and communication. So we are looking at hours of operation from the rock crushing standpoint will be Monday through Friday only, 8:00 to 4:00 PM. We'll be looking at.
What was it? What was the beginning time of that?
Eight to five.
Yeah.
Eight AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday.
Yep.
Saturday, Sunday, and holidays off.
Yep.
No one wants to pay time and a half. We're gonna look at the water system to, to reduce the dust control. And to the credit of Mr. McSawley, he has already agreed to that in real time. And we have the private, the privacy fence. Which in term and definition is either a solid fence and/or a chain link fence with the privacy slats to reduce and mitigate. Am I missing anything else?
One other thing, Mr. Chairman, I kind of fell through the wayside that one of the, one of the speakers mentioned, the traffic alleviation from coming off of the property to Meadowcroft Road. And I had mentioned about possibly putting a sign-up caution, I was thinking about this. It seems to me the best way to possibly alleviate is to make sure any vehicles coming off of, coming off of the site onto Meadowcroft Road should be taking a right and not taking a left right into the train tracks. So there's some signage that we can put up to make sure that.
Right turn only.
Right turn only signage, make sure that vehicles don't, don't, you don't, last thing you need is you want a vehicle like turning in and getting hit by a train too.
Not to go through the neighborhood, go the other way.
So the city has a traffic.
Left at the bottom of the ramp.
The, the city has a traffic, a person in the traffic engineering who are acting as an interim traffic. His name's Alan Heteria. And we've met with.
So excuse me, excuse me, gentlemen, gentlemen.
Sorry, Mr. Hammer.
Mr. Hammer has the floor. We're trying to, we're trying to finalize these conditions, Celtics are at eight.
So the city does have an individual that, that reviews traffic mitigation signage. And I've met this gentleman, Alan Heteria. I'm not exactly sure the pronunciation of his last name.
Okay.
But we would meet him out at site and take his recommendation on what the signage would be and how it would just be displayed.
Okay, so I guess we'll leave it at the traffic. Well, is there a traffic engineer? I was told we don't have, we haven't had one in quite some time. Do we have a traffic engineer now in the city?
Uh, no, he's the assistant traffic.
He's the assistant traffic.
Okay.
For the record, if I could be notified, I'd like to be on site as well for that signage meeting. So we're all in the same point of clarification.
One clarification, Mr. Chairman, if I may, as far as the water line coming in, are we, we talking about when, when the rock crushing is going on, that, that operation, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, for the rock crushing piece, I mean, you're not, you know, we're not rebuilding 495. It's gonna be a minimum use, you're not gonna have a required water truck according to EPA standards after the crushing detail. Any other concerns or comments?
So how do we want to word that condition as far as the water?
The six-month administrative review, I think it will be to review hours of operations and traffic concerns primarily, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, because the, the rock crushing should be done by that point. So the administrative review would be for those items mentioned. So we have.
So let me just clarify, so we have hours of operation for rock crushing, Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 5:00 PM. No rock crushing on Saturdays, Sundays, or holidays. We have, what do we got? No vehicle, so no vehicle storage on site with the exception of the front end loader.
Correct.
The water, so I've got maintain water truck on site to alleviate dust or work with DPD to, but, Mr. McSawley said that he.
Inclusive of a quasi showering system.
Yeah, so I think the intention.
I said inclusive of a quasi showering system. If you're gonna bring water in, I mean, I would just.
I, I think I can answer.
Bring it through PVC and pump holes.
Yeah, trying to figure out how to word.
Yeah.
Sorry, Chair. I think the intention is to have the water truck there while things are happening with the crushing operation. When the bins are in and the material storage is in, there'll be a water line that'll be brought in so that a sprinkler system can be set up to manage the control of any dust coming off of the operation.
It's even better.
For the launch.
It's even better, that's one step above what I was anticipating.
Okay, so maintain water truck on site to alleviate dust during rock crushing operations. Once rock crushing operations are alleviated, then establish watering, standard watering system?
Yep, install a watering system.
Dylan, you got that? All right. Six-month administrative review, and I think that's all I had for.
The eight-foot.
On the eight-foot.
Eight-foot privacy. Eight-foot privacy fence, tight fence, if you will. It cannot be chain-legged, it cannot be open, it must be.
Solid privacy.
Contiguous privacy fence.
Continuous privacy fence. Dylan, you mind reading those back so we got, so we're all clear on everything, please?
Yeah, okay, so I have the hours of operation for the rock crushing will be Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM on week, on weekdays, not including holidays. A water system, a water system will be established on site after crushing is complete, and a water truck will be brought on site during crushing. An eight-foot opaque privacy fence will screen the property from the residential area. Turn signage directing exiting vehicles will be added upon the recommendation of.
Traffic engineer.
And there will be a six-month administrative review.
Okay.
And no vehicles on site other than the front end loader.
Great. So you're in agreeance on all those conditions, Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Attorney Cox. With that being said, may I have a motion?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZBA 2022-30 for 52.1 Bolt Street for special permit approval under Article 12.5 F for open lot, storage of sand and other similar materials. And this is a corrected one, Article 12.9 Q, removal of sand, gravel, and other similar materials with the previously mentioned conditions.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second motion.
Seconded by Mr. McCarthy, may I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin.
I approve with conditions.
Vice Chair Peck.
Approve with conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approve with conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with conditions.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Member Prokop.
Approve with conditions.
So the project has been approved with the itemized conditions. We thank everyone for coming down and processing this open.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good evening. Let's move back to new business for ZBA 2022-24 for Varianz JAF 27 LLC at 175 Dalton Street, Section 5.1. We'll follow professional courtesy for non-notice or appearance, and we will move to continue this to June 27, 2022.
Okay, just to double check, Dylan, there's nobody else on Zoom, correct?
There's someone named iPad, but I don't, I don't know who that is, and I don't believe they're for this project. The app, the app, the staff member working with the applicant on this project was not in the office today, so it's possible they reached out to, to them.
Okay, I believe the applicant has other matters on before us for the board coming up, approaching, is it the 27th, I believe?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so.
So that being said.
Put them on for the 27th?
Put them on for the 27th. If we could have that with a motion as a continuance.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZBA 2022-24 for 175 Dalton Street for, to continue the public hearing this matter to June 27, 2022.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Prokop, may I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin.
Approve continuance to June 27, 2022.
Vice Chair Peck.
Approve the continuance.
Member Callahan.
Approve continuance to June 27, 2022.
Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance to June 27, 2022.
Member Briere.
Approval.
And Member Prokop.
Approve continuance to June 27, 2022.
Thank you. Moving on to other items, we have minutes for approval for May 9, 2022. Any members have any additions, deletions, concerns? None being heard, may I have a motion?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for May 9, 2022.
May I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Briere, may I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin.
Accept the minutes for 5/9/2022.
Vice Chair Peck.
Approve the minutes.
Member Callahan.
Approve the minutes for May 9, 2022.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the meeting minutes for May 9, 2022.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Member Prokop.
Approve minutes for May 9, 2022.
Moving forward on to other business, any comments or concerns by the board this time?
Mr. Chairman, I got one. I, I know we got some emails previously this, this afternoon from Peter, and I appreciate the emails of concerned citizens who have been calling DPD about upcoming projects in their opposition. We really should be telling them that they, not to just call DPD, they should just show up to the hearing. And we have all this access to the public hearing, including live, via Zoom, via phone call. If, I understand if people want to voice opposition, if they want to send in a writing in opposition to put it on the public record, that's approved, that's fine as well. But just calling DPD and saying you approve, you oppose a particular project is not beneficial to anybody and is in defiance of the open meeting law. And quite frankly, if that happens, and nothing against Peter, I understand, it was good that, I was glad that he told us that, but we really should just be telling the people if they oppose a particular, if they have a position on a particular petition and they want to be heard, they must show up to the hearing or they must submit something in writing. So, I mean, Dylan, sorry?
Folks who call in are encouraged to attend the meeting and submit something in writing. Remember, people don't always do that, though. They're encouraged, but.
I, I just want to make sure that's, that's, that's stress to them. I mean, the last thing we need is someone calling, you know, someone, you know, we go forward on a petition, someone called up DPD, said, we oppose, I oppose this, I want to let you know I oppose this. And they don't show up to the meeting, and then they're complaining later on, saying, well, I called DPD and I opposed it. Like, so it's, it's just for the, for the public, for the, to, to let the public know as well, if you have a position on any particular petition before the, before this board or any board in the city, and you want to be heard, the forum for that is the public meeting. It's not just making a phone call to a department and just saying you oppose something. So that's all I really had to say.
Thank you. I, I will, I will follow that up in understanding that DPD staff are fielding these calls constantly. But we, we do have to watch the open meeting law, and we put it in a, once we put it in an email, kind of puts us in a precarious position. So I, I do agree with Mr. Callahan that petition is, are subject to the open meeting and that the law is very defined. So this is the forum, either in person or on writing. I, I did have some concerns about the communication.
Yeah, I do have a question. So when residents are able to submit in, in writing.
Yeah.
With their names, as we request, to submit comments to be read into, into the public comment period.
Yes.
Prior to.
Yes.
And your concern is when they just submit generic?
Yeah, the, the concern would be is that they're calling here, and then we put in writing amongst ourselves in an email that, you know, John Smith on 22 Wellman Street is, you know, in opposition of Plan A, and we're discussing that prior to the meeting, the meeting, the open meeting hasn't even taken place, so. Mr. Callahan could speak to that legally, but I think we're already in dangerous waters there for public hearing. So I, I think I would suggest that in the future, we would just, if there was an email communication, we would just say that we have. just say that we have several, we have several citizens either in favor or in opposition, and then we always read those into record. Sometimes we'll get them, and there'll be 60 signatures on it. We'll read the preface of the, of the letter, and we'll identify 60 citizens in opposition or they're in favor and move from there. We just have to be aware of how we communicate amongst each other. We don't want to be subject to the fines of open meeting law. I just married a daughter off and piggy bank's kind of empty. So I appreciate that. I appreciate the comments of Mr. Callahan. Any other comments or concern by the board?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, sir.
Mr. Chair.
I wanted to just, this is more for the, for the public that's watching, and if we could document this in our notes for the public record, that anyone and anyone is welcome to come down and speak at City Hall, whether you're for or against a petition. And, you know, due to all the access afforded to us, you don't have to come in person if you cannot. You can always Zoom it in or you make a call. So I want to encourage, this is, like I said, to the public, if you feel very strongly about something, whether it's against or for, for something, I encourage you to, like my colleague said, submit something in writing and paper. That's, that's the formal legal process and/or come in person via, at the chambers or through Zoom or a phone call, you know. And, you know, for myself, I get plenty of calls and texts and from people all the time about opposition. So I always encourage them to come as well. So this is, again, more or less to the public and for the record that we encourage everyone to be involved. This is your, this is your community. So write a letter, come on down, we're gladly listening, and, you know, and all that. So I just want to also echo those comments.
Online Zoom, call-in, there's plenty of ways to, there's plenty of ways to, you know, come to the meetings nowadays, so.
Fair enough. Any other comments or concerns? None being heard. Make a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Everybody have a good night.
Good night. Bye, Sandy.
Bye.